Have to go back to saying the northern version, like you all instead of y'all. No, I don't. They always made fun of me because I would say you all. Like, don't say it like that.
Okay, I call a meeting of the city council for the city of Petoskey. For July 18th, 2022, I ask that you rise with me for a recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Finance Director Terry, whatever you are today. Would you please call roll?
Sure. Demore.
Present.
Shields.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Walker.
Present.
And Murphy.
Present. We have a court. Now, I had the great opportunity, we identified people in the city that go above and beyond. We're not looking at people that are employed by the city or even volunteer with boards, but what we're looking at is people that go above and beyond to make the people that come here feel welcome. So I'd like Mike, Mikey, come on up, would you? That's pretty cool. Whereas kite flying renews dreams of free spirit, hope and independence. And whereas watching a kite fly a kite renews thoughts of youth and dreams. So whereas residents, tourists and visitors have enjoyed the striking view of large kites flying over 450 feet at Bayfront Parkway. And whereas people of all ages have been welcome to interact with the kite mayor and discuss kite flying. Whereas those driving along US 131 and into the waterfront are likely to view the kites as well. Now, therefore, I, John Murphy, Mayor of Petoskey, do proclaim and acknowledge the thanks and appreciation Mikey Griffiths as the kite flyer ambassador of the city of Petoskey. It's awful cool. But you know what? You're the ambassador because people come back and say, boy, that guy is a great asset to Petoskey.
I know, it's me from all over the place. I even invite people from different countries that I have down there.
Yeah. Fascinating. So thank you very much. He brought a kite in to show everybody. This kite is one of those that goes up around 500 feet.
It's an 11-foot delta. It goes 11 feet across the bank of what the size of 11 trees. Once in occasional while, you might see big ones out there that are 19 foot. Those are flying on special day because too much wind. They look out like bringing in a worm. And yeah, well, thank you very much for the thing. I also like to thank Al Carey. He's the person who got me in. Al Carey.
Al Carey. From Harbor Springs?
Oh, yeah.
Charlotte, boy, yeah.
Harbor Springs, everything in Harbor Springs and Petoskey.
I think I met him the other day.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, my dear.
Thank you.
I'll take this now.
Thank you.
If I could see the rest of them, they do live in the back of the truck. Although it's working, it's part of the parking lot by the back lot, yeah. It's harder to do them back there, but I've managed to get a couple of them up.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
I can imagine this will bring on more people to visit you, so you may have a lineup of people.
Give them a string and give them a kite. Don't let go.
Good advice. Good advice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So well reserved. Okay. Thank you for being so supportive of him. He really appreciates it, I'm sure, and we do. Next to the presentation, to hear a presentation by Public Safety Director Matt Reed on Michigan Street Traffic Study.
Thank you, Mr. Matt. I was requested to compile some data for council. In order to get that data unbiased, we obtained a couple of speed data gathering collection that worked covertly, so the people didn't realize we were gathering data. This was driven by a concern on Michigan Street. We have since used these devices numerous locations and building up hopefully large databases for all the city streets. We have speed, volume, and also touch briefly on crash reports for this. Originally, I had indicated that I believe there to be a perceived issue in the 9 o'clock of Michigan Street, but we needed to confirm that. I think you're going to see that's probably that's on both the gathering device. You're going to see four different blocks of height. These are four separate data gathering time frames. The first being in the middle of March. There's a, I compiled the averages and also the 85 percentile. I'm not comfortable with where that's a basis for what speed limit should be. You use by the state of Michigan, by many states. It's based on free flowing traffic speeds and what they should set for them. So in this situation, what we see is that if they were to use the 85 percentile, they would recommend raising the speed limit. So we certainly wouldn't want to address that. We're going to look at more at the averages. With a 25 mile an hour speed limit to the residential zone, eastbound and westbound are relatively close by a few miles an hour. Next likely. As we move a little bit later into the spring and then into the summer, we just collected a lot of data this morning. You can see that the speeds really aren't varying much at all. We're going anywhere from an average of 23 miles an hour to 26 mile an hour. Next likely. So we thought, well, maybe there's a volume issue. We could see a significant issue with traffic volume either. Depending on the length of stay for the data gathering units or, as you can see, above 500, not even 800 miles an hour, so that's a thousand cars. As we moved in this way, we saw the volumes increase some. It's significant here is surprising to me. If you look at the volumes, the end of the school year was right there towards that first week in June. I would have anticipated the traffic volume to taper off. Really hasn't. But I believe this to be influenced by state street being closed as well. Because of the construction moving on the state street. So as we move forward, we'll have to define that and see where it actually goes, but I think that's a pretty effective. There was some concern, it was brought forward, that we got several accidents on Michigan Street. The front is we can go back right now to 2003, if there are current records that actually go back to management systems from what we're currently using. 201 crashes, but only three of them related to the Lakewood and Michigan intersection. And all of the accidents were property damage. There were no injury accidents. There was a crash brought up about high schoolers, I think to prom or some other form of occasion. They're all pressed out. That did originally come in as an injury accident. They're not the original. So this is just a summary. Like I said, it's a brief report that indicates that the release is not a speed issue on Michigan Street. That as we thought, it's probably more of a perceived. Yeah, that was just a summary of mine.
I have a question. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Reed. Is there, in your experience or thinking through this question, so you have the averages. Is there something that the average can hide? I've heard, you know, in statistics, there's an opportunity to tell a story of using statistics by what you look at. And sometimes I'm wondering if the average could hide something like, maybe there's some excessive speeds that are rare, but potentially still dangerous. So does this study fully capture everything that we and council and the community who's concerned about safety should be aware of? Or just, or could the average be hiding some important data?
I don't believe it's hiding any important data. I believe it's hiding the fact that we were reporting data. I will fully acknowledge, certainly, there's going to be some mistakes. There's going to be an occasional car that's going fast. Also offset by the cars that are going slow. So certainly, when you look at averages, that's exactly what our averages. Certainly, there's going to be the extreme circumstances where somebody's traveling faster. That's how the average gets brought up.
Thank you.
But as far as.
Mr. Moore.
My only question was about volume, and I don't even know if it's appropriate for me to field this question with you. But do you have any thoughts about those volumes that you saw, I mean, for residential street? I don't know if you have a sense of that. Is that high volume for a residential street? Or, because again, anecdotally, what I've heard from folks on Michigan Street is since the changes were made on Mitchell, and this could be accentuated, as you said, also with state now. But even with the changes on Mitchell, they felt that a lot of traffic was diverted to Michigan in lieu of taking Mitchell Street.
It's really to give an educated answer to that question. I can tell you from the data that we have during the time period before State Street was under construction, the traffic volume was more than Michigan. About 400 cars a day.
On state was more?
On state.
Okay.
I was the most right.
Okay.
I would say that those few streets are about a third of what you'll see on Hamilton and Jennings. And again, these are just based on some preliminary numbers that we have so far as we start to build the database. But looking at what we have so far, we don't have Mitchell. We will be. So far, the areas we targeted, particularly areas where people have a concern. So those were our first right areas.
And you're going to be doing this in an ongoing fashion throughout the city?
There are right now.
Okay.
If some of it is to react to a perceived problem.
Sure.
Concerns, some of it is proactive, looking at upcoming construction projects. Okay, we know next year that's going to be a destructive block of the device. So this, this will be in longer.
And can we get a copy of this report? I'd like to be able to share that with the constituents who express concerns.
Yes.
Question. Okay. Thank you.
I'm sure Shane will email it to everybody. Ms. Walker.
Director Reed for your reporting. I think that even looking at the number, if you said that the average is about 500 cars a day, even five cars traveling at 40 miles an hour is a perception of that it's a problem. So I can understand why the residents would feel that way. And like you mentioned, Derek, the averaging and aggregating of data, you know, obviously that can be skewed based on the lower volume, people traveling at a slower type of slower speed versus a higher speed. So, and I think that hopefully sharing that information with the community at large and those constituents in particular on Michigan Street will help. I don't know if it will alleviate any of their concerns because to them, it's still a problem and they see every day. And even if it's just one or three cars compared to 500 that are traversing the street and they don't witness that.
Thank you, on a daily basis. So I appreciate that. And then also, another consideration would be how we traverse the city of Petoskey when you're going from east, west to east. If you think about it, Lake Street is under construction right now. So people that are traveling from downtown have Mitchell as an option. They have Michigan as an option. They don't have state as an option right now, or they have Grove. So as a person that works downtown and lives downtown, I frequent, I traverse those streets oftentimes coming from work at the county building or from home. And those are all considerations when you're trying to figure out like the quickest route from A to B, right? And so Lake Street and State Street being under construction, Michigan or Mitchell Street having the beautiful green mediums really slowing traffic down and being very intentional in its purpose. It's really serving, serving the purpose of of diverting some traffic, but also just really slowing people down. So I appreciate the data and I look forward to being able to share that with the neighborhoods as well. And, and as we continue to plan for ways of slowing down traffic throughout our city. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Mr. Shields.
I said a follow-up question. Thanks, Ms. Walker. The timing of the day, is there any timing associated with the speed? I know some questions have been arisen about after-school hours and high school driving traffic could be more of a concern. Is there any way to narrow in on specific timing?
Yes. I can tell you, I didn't want to get into the council.
Sure, appreciate that.
We were correct in our beliefs that around the school time, we see a spike in traffic volume. I was slightly surprised that just after 5 o'clock was bigger than the school traffic. So the volume, the peak in the volume is just after 5 o'clock. But there is definitely a significant rise just after 3 o'clock. And you see it here.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Council? I'll be safe to Director Reed. I think this is a great report. It validates exactly what you said. It's that people driving fast, when you're standing there, it looks faster than what it is a lot of times. We're not looking at bump outs, are we?
We're not, sir.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. I know that was brought up by some people on Michigan Street with bump outs. I just, or I just don't see that as doing anything but helping the shop absorb the people that deal with front end lightning.
It should be more of a hazard.
Thank you for the report.
Thank you. If there's somebody that would like to now address council after this report, we'd like to have you come up. You give us your full name, your full address, and you have the mic to address council. Is there anybody online? None. Okay. Moving along. A document about proposed resolution that would confirm approval of the following. The June 20th, 2022, regular session, city council meeting minutes. As well as acknowledging receipt of a report of certain transactions that have occurred since June 20th, 2022. I take it to council for possible questions, adds, subtracts, or a possible motion if nobody finds anything they wish to discuss. Mr. Moore.
Yeah, relative to the part of the minutes that speaks to.
Okay, you remember we give page?
There's no page number, but it's relative to adopting the ADU ordinance. On the section where it reports comments, I feel from my perspective that it's insufficient because it really doesn't reflect why I voted against the provision. And I did give a written statement, which I provided to the city as well. So I would ask that either that be incorporated or in some way summarized so that the essence of my concerns be reflected in the minutes. I think that's important from two perspectives. One, this is a communication tool so people understand, you know, our perspectives on certain things. And also that it's a governance record and should reflect why I voted as I did. So I would ask that that change be made.
Mr. Terry.
City council minutes are records of actions, legal actions. City council minutes are not supposed to be transcripts or individual quotes of meetings. That was an hour and a half long discussion. I'm trying to put in specific statements, quotes of individuals that could be volumes. I mean, we'd have to go to everybody in the audience, everybody in council. What do you put in? What don't you put in? The point of the city council minutes are to put down what the motion was, and that reflects what happened at the meeting. Comments or individual comments for individuals' purposes isn't the purpose of the city council minutes. We just try, we do try to throw in some comments as far as we discussed, review this and the other, but try not to get into individual comments about things. And so that's, that's the way it's always been. That's the way minutes are supposed to be recorded from my learnings.
Respectfully, Mr. Terry, I'm not asking for a transcript of my statements. I'm asking for some reflection in the minutes of why I opposed. There's nothing in these minutes. Thank you.
Well, okay. I do know, you know, we could avoid putting all memos, all comments totally into this thing. It could be down to just simply a motion, second, passing or failing. And that's all you really legally have to put in to the minutes is motions, roll, and so I guess.
And should go back a lot of years. That's exactly what's in some of the states.
Yeah. Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I've had residents let me know that they do read the minutes as an update. As Mr. Moore pointed out, it's a source of information for our residents. And I acknowledge the, you know, hearing Mr. Moore's desire for the reason why and also like, okay, is it clear? I'm trying to quickly read through. Is it clear reasons why I voted certain ways as well? So how do, how do you put all those reasons and not have it to be atone? Is, are events recorded? Is that? Is there audio file that's saved? I don't even know.
We do record them, but we do not store those. I mean, you know, permanently ready for somebody to go back and look for.
Just thinking out loud here.
I think two, there's two interesting things that have been said here. One is, this is how we've always done it. And two, this is what's legal. I guess I'd be really interested as the newest member of the council to revisit and take a look at what exactly is required in the minutes. I'd be interested to know that. And as far as what we've always done, I'm somebody who always likes to look to how can we do it better.
Right. We've done a lot of ways. I know that's a good statement for people to kind of jump on. But I think also the city manager sent something out to everybody tonight about the Michigan Municipal League showing what's required within minutes. And within there is said that basically it's just, not basically, it is the formal actions of city council is what's required to be in the minutes. But I can tell you over the years, every time somebody disagrees and wants to vote no, we don't put in the reasons why they vote no. Just like we don't put in our views of why everybody votes yes. It would be very difficult for a city clerk to try to figure out, what do I put in this week and not next week? And we'd be debating back and forth, the council from member to member, especially I would say on more volatile issues.
Sure.
Of how, what goes in the minutes. And then what do we put into public statements as far as what goes in and what doesn't go in?
Ms. Walker.
Thanks, Mayor. I think for just this, this context, if it would be applicable, you can always make addendums and additions to minutes. And so if it would be something as simple as council member Demore's statement, like she said that she had, she had provided a written statement. If we could just interject that into the minutes from last month as like an addendum or a correction or an addition to the minutes, I think, would that be a happy medium that we could move forward with right now, Tina?
That's all I was asking for. But there'd be some, I actually read a written statement at the last meeting. Yeah. And I provided that.
Okay.
And all I was asking that either that or something reflecting what was said there be included as information for anybody who might read the minutes to understand what happened at the meeting.
And that to me, Mayor, seems very reasonable. And I would, I would second that, that idea of just maybe just putting those in in an addendum to last month's meeting minutes. Seems pretty easy, especially if it's written already.
Mr. Wagner. Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And I, I don't know what's very wrong or what we have to do or not. There was an issue a couple of years ago where I was strongly outvoted 4 to 1. And I tried to appeal to Jim Murray, actually, to have my position stated publicly. He said, we don't do that. Basically, once something is voted 4 to 1, that's the position of council, whether it was your position or not. And I, I've gone with it. I. Mr. Shields.
The only question I have and to continue the discussion is if Mr. Moore submits a written statement and it brings up questions that I felt were part of the meeting, but the minutes don't answer those questions. Well, then, then the public who is giving us information is not getting the full discussion. That, that concerns me.
Yeah, and I would completely understand that, Derek, if it was something I wrote up and invented after the meeting. But it was what I read at the meeting. So. And again, I wasn't asking that it be published like a transcript. I was providing that to assist in constructing what was included here. And I mean, it's clear that decisions are made about what's included here because it doesn't just list what was proposed and the vote. There are comments, although they're aggregated throughout the minutes. So those comments just did not include anything having to do with why I didn't vote for it.
So where do we go if on every topic, every item, all of us write a two-page letter to council? Well, no, but I mean, you got to look at each street. So we put all, everybody. So we put all, everybody's pages into the minutes on the discussion. I don't know.
That's certainly not what I'm advocating for.
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think that if, if somebody like intentionally submits written documentation, that that could easily be included at the beginning of a meeting. And I know that minutes are a summary of what's happened. And like you said, we're legally responsible for the motions and the action. And I, I know how much time it takes to be on a recorder and stop and, and write and type or whatever. So I realize that it's very laborious. And it is a summary, but it seems like something like that, which is really specific and intentional, is something easy to submit and, and have as public record.
Let me ask you this. Could, Mr. Moore, could you paraphrase or summarize your statement? That would be included in the minutes?
Right now?
Yeah.
No, I'm not prepared to do that. But it's, again, it's what I read at the meeting last month, and that's exactly what I, I gave for preparation of the minutes.
Mr. Shields.
I, I'm proposing that whether that's Councilwoman DeMore makes up a draft process for us to discuss and consider or in a, in a council packet so then we can discuss it at a meeting. I, I am interested in considering a version of an ability for a council person to have a written statement included in the minutes. But it sounds like, I don't know if we can come up with that process here tonight. So I'd be interested in, I'd be entertaining Councilwoman DeMore's suggestion for a process to how to do that, that's you know, fair to the, the meeting, the meeting's events. Like you said, probably nothing written after the meeting, but something that's comes to the meeting. I want to think about it some more, but I, I'm open to thinking about it.
Me too. And I have not had an opportunity to review what got sent from MML. I'm happy to do that. But I think for all of us, an updated discussion about what minutes should look like, it may be, maybe as we've always done, them are just fine. But maybe there are other possibilities. And I, I think that would be good for all of us to look at as a group. But for the time being, my only specific request was relative to last month because it's completely.
We will add this. I will ask that this be added to the agenda for next month's meeting. Okay? Now, to deal with your presentation now of your past. How do we resolve this? What are your desires?
That some form of something be included relative to what my concerns were that I expressed. That's my request. And it's at the pleasure of those who sit at this.
I've always thought it was the freedom of the person, the clerk, taking notes. Because otherwise, we will end up with a minutes that will be some meetings when they go to three and a half, four hours, we're going to end up with packets of, of taking the secretary typing these minutes up. I don't think that is a good use of her time either.
I couldn't agree more. I'm not requesting war and peace. Absolutely not.
But my fear is, my fear is that everybody starts bringing in their own statements to be included in our issues. Are they to all be included in the minutes?
Well, again, we'll need to visit legally what's required. But if you're asking my perspective, if one person disagrees with an issue that's been considered, I think at least somewhere in the minutes, there should be some reflection of that person's perspective. I don't think, again, it needs to be a transcript or anything of that nature, but there's nothing reflected here.
Was there anything reflected on anybody in the audience or anyplace else speaking against the idea of doing this project? Of doing this amendment?
I think there was a bit of notation here about audience numbers. But with due respect, Mayor, the audience was not voting. I was. Yes. There's a paragraph about public comments.
Well, did, you did get quoted in the council comments you recorded as could use to the Public Safety Director for the Open House.
No, that's not.
Is that what you're talking about?
No.
Which, where are we talking about? I've lost. Okay, I guess.
Page two of the minutes from last month.
I don't know. Is this possible in the future for us to page number minute, meeting minutes? And that way it'll take care of us scrambling on where are we at? Okay.
Second page.
Mr. Harrow, would you please weigh in and help us move from here? Ultimately, this is your meeting. All right. And so we, we will do whatever you would like us to do from a direction standpoint. If, if any of you want things added and the consensus amongst the, the council is to proceed with that addition or subtraction, then we will make those corrections as directed.
Would you like her comments that she did that were written to be included in the meeting, Mr. Wagner?
Or some summary?
I know. Right now, for today, we can take.
Today, I would be happy to do that, but not precedent setting because I, I agree that if we were to take every written comment that comes to us by email and everything else. And I agree, Tina, that you voted. Not all the other comments are included. I mean, I'd be happy to move forward with a summary statement of that. And my recollection, it was based on some lack of specific definition. I think you said it differently, but I, I could go forward with that. I have no, I have no issue.
Are you okay with us approving this? Somebody make, when we do make a motion, are you okay with putting her comments or her written statement into the minutes? And this time and next week, next meeting, we sit and talk about what direction we go.
Yes.
Because I know the public, we did not put in the minutes. We've had pages of stuff that people will send us from Dave Prudman that we did not put in the minutes.
Correct. Agreed.
But this is a council member who's voting, and she took the time to provide a written statement in advance of the meeting. And that's how she based her decision making, of course, after listening to the public and weighing, doing her due diligence. So I think it's, it, it's a very easy thing for, for Audrey just to drop that into the, an amended minutes from my meeting.
Do I have a motion on that?
I mean, Sarah.
I'm looking for a motion on that. To accept the best of this. Either way, I just need a motion and then a second, then we'll have discussion.
Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to amend the minutes from June the twentieth, excuse me, June the twentieth, city council meeting to reflect the statement provided from council member Moore on the accessory drawing minutes.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Thank you, Ms. Walker. Any other discuss, discussion, counsel? As you, my comment is, is as you've stated, Mr. Wagner, Brian, that this is not setting a precedent for the future. Let's work this through. Let's come up with a plan that's going to work. I, I, okay.
I would, I would just, this whole red and green thing's tripping me out a little bit. I would just encourage you to read the attachment that I sent out this afternoon. I think that, that, that would be valuable to, to to read and understand. And then obviously that'll help us prepare for the, the discussion.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I've got a city clerk tariff roll.
Walker.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Moore.
Hi.
Murphy.
Yes. Motion passes five zero, and there will be the inclusion piece of it that will be put in. Thank you, Mr. Terry, for taking care of that. Next is miscellaneous public comment. This is your opportunity.
The minutes and the check register?
It was.
Were you including both of them in your motion?
Yes, I was including both of those.
Next is miscellaneous public comment, and that's your opportunity to speak to counsel, directly to counsel, not the audience. Give us your full name, full address of any matter that you feel is important. If it is something that's coming up on the agenda in the next half hour, hour, I don't think we're going to be here that long tonight. I would ask that you wait until the subject that you want to talk to us about is, is broached on the agenda. Does anybody wish to talk to counsel? Come on down.
Heidi Shear, and I'm eight oh eight Crooked Tree Drive. I'm, forgive me, city manager.
Shane.
Shane. Last meeting, talked about communicating to the public and knowing about what's going on. He had mentioned about an app, and I was just thinking with him, I don't know if you're going to address this in your, your upcoming piece on the agenda. But I thought, you know, having a real concerted effort to give a platform that we can all know about it. So I was thinking about text messages, you know, you can have a city council, you know, you can review it. Because I'm all the time getting, you know, updates. And I think it'd be fantastic for us in our city as more and more people are wanting to be engaged and know what's going on. So I just wanted to put that out there as an app or also not just a app, but a text message.
And what would be in that text message?
It would be a link directly to upcoming events, city councils tonight, or city council, here's the agenda, just communicate. We talked about the event coming up here in July, or what do you call it, where the, your Metta Fairgrounds.
The ward convention and the city convention, yeah, last week.
Things like that. Convention is this week, you can come out and that, just a simple way. It's really easy once it gets set up to communicate to the public what's going on. Because we don't have a newspaper for everybody anymore. So just wanted to put that out there as a suggestion.
Thank you. Thank you. Who else wants to speak to counsel? Come on down, Mike.
Hi, everyone. Michael, this is Joe. I'm at five one four in Lexington. And I want to bring an issue to the council that I'm concerned about. Another six issue. At the corner of Emmett and Michigan, there is an old hotel that has been abandoned for ten years, ever since we bought it. And now it's just looking worse and worse and worse. About two weeks ago, we were going to buy it. I said, that's going to fall on somebody sometimes. Gee, somebody should do something about that. So I decided to call Mr. Reed, who's very helpful. But I thought, you know, I want to bring this to city council. Something in the ordinance that you can put in. Go to Sam's Braces for breakfast. Store front, next door to that. You should be able to do something together to clean that ass off, don't you think? Okay. Any questions?
I always ask people, what are your suggestions?
Let's make it unprofitable to have abandoned buildings. Walk this way. I'm dicey, I think. And I know, I will tell them, oh, you can do what you want. No, you can't. I mean, you want to add that in your home. You know what, where I'm going with this, you know, I'm familiar with, you know, with city government and all that sort of thing. But it seems to me we should be exploring some things. Some crazy things. And so, what do you think?
I, what I have done is I've looked at options. I've talked to the city attorney. Can we start charging people that have vacant buildings downtown? Can we start doing some kind of a penalty or a taxation, higher taxes? It's legally not allowed right now. The city of San Francisco is in a lawsuit to try to tax those higher levels. It's in the court. I don't see a reason for us to spend a lot of city attorney money right now until we hear how those things work out. Well. Well, this is a firm, this is Plunkett and Cooney. Which is thirty or fifty people that they, they communicate with the downtown attorneys as well. So it's probably a hundred attorneys to that.
That's what.
Ms. Walker.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike, for mentioning that. Mike did also bring that up at our ward convention. So we talked a lot about the International Property Maintenance Code, and that's a, a medium for reporting, even anonymously if you so choose, abandoned and vacant and discombobulated structures, so both residential and commercial. I also followed up from our meeting and sent an email to Al Terry as the acting city manager after our meeting, as well as our new city manager and the mayor. And that topic was part of my twelve points that I wanted to bring up from our ward convention. So I think that you've done the proper thing and, and reporting it to, to Director Reed because he is the one that helps facilitate responses to the International Property Maintenance Code. And once again, and this is what we talked about at the, at the city convention, and I know that you and Rose couldn't attend. But that building has been, has had a permit off and on. I don't know if its permit for reconstruction is up to date. So that would be a thing that we could check in with, with our city planner. And of course, Rose sits on the planning commission as well. So I know that she's well-versed in, you know, in the comings and goings and, and the presentations that have happened to the planning commission. So, and I am hopeful with Shane on board that we can start to address some of these vacancies in a creative way. Because I know that our legal team has told us there's no way to legally hold them accountable or penalize them or give them a different tax structure. But I know that there's, where there's a rail, there's a way. So I'm confident that maybe we could do something about this.
Well, there's two things to that. Number one, the city has, if you drive on Petoskey Street, you drive on Emmett Street, the city has pushed with the I am International Property Maintenance Code. We have actually torn down, hired people to tear down buildings. I can think of, what, all four, five?
See, I know to retrieve, I'm not getting up to four or five.
Bridge.
But we have actually gone after them. And they've had to be removed because they were condemned. Secondly, we are looking at hiring a full-time code enforcer for the city. We have money in it for part-time. I think it would be better to have a full-time one so that the money is, so that it allows us to hire somebody that will work full-time and not just find somebody that wants a little part-time work. So those two things are what I see as how we have addressed it so far. I do know that there was a problem up on, on Lurdes Street with people with boats. There was a guy with a bunch of dead boats. Is that right? And what happened to them? Boats in his yard that were never going to float again. And they were removed. The city tries to work with these people rather than use a hammer. We'd rather use a carrot. Of come on now, you got a week to get those things out of here. So we have been addressing that around town.
My concern is obviously, this is a business address, apparently, I guess, so something that would help that. I got to tell you, I mean, this has been going on for ten years.
That building.
When I bought our house from the lodge people.
My understanding is, is that gentleman, I don't know this for a fact. I've not been in there. I did talk to him one day on the street, that he is remodeling room by room in, in the hotel itself rather than on the outside right now. But that he's spending a lot of his efforts and time on the inside. But I don't know if that's true or not. Mister, I'm gonna ask Public Safety Director Breed, Breed, Mr. Breed. Please.
Properties changed.
You had indicated those ordinance, those have all expired. They expired and we that they came involved again. Mr. Shield, the owner of property, was issued a notice violation. We were made a dozen different violations. When you received that, apparently he decided it was time to sell the property. The property closed on the eighth of this month. So we are back square one with new owner, but we will issue the same notice of violation.
Good. Keep keep up the pressure. Mr. Shields.
We had similar questions raised in Ward Two Ward Convention. And can Mayor, can we, it doesn't have to be next month's council meeting, but in a soon to be future council meeting. We have a discussion on vacancies. And, you know, it can include the our current opinion on the legality of the stick method and other ideas. I'd be happy to do homework on what other communities around the state and country are doing vacancies and and not to put it on city staff. But if there's, you know, some information already there, this could be something in our council packet. And just to give me personally opportunity to make some comments more particular to this issue. But I have personally also heard from my residents in Ward Two. I appreciate that.
Mr. Horn. Yeah, I'll I'll add that to a discussion item. I will say in the community I I served in, in southeast Michigan, we did put forth a vacant building ordinance. That was well before the challenge in San Francisco, so I'm not sure how how actively they're utilizing that ordinance currently from a legal standpoint. But we found that that was not necessarily effective, that people were just writing checks to the city, which that kind of wasn't the purpose. Obviously, we'll take their money, but that we what we really want is compliance, and that's all we really are after when we talk about code enforcement. We just want you to come into compliance with property maintenance code. But in this case, the vacant building ordinance essentially said if you were not actively marketing your property through a real estate or Realtor, or you were not actively investing in that property, after a certain period of time, you are you are going to be charged a certain fee, and that fee would escalate annually. And it would rise annually as we noticed that there was no activity going on. And we really were focused on our downtown. The the challenge is, once you lose a roof on a historic building, as we all know, these buildings are are connected downtown. So once one goes, there's a tendency for the next building attached to it to also suffer. So we want to make sure that we're holding each other accountable for their building condition. And that's the same way in a residential neighborhood. Nothing more frustrating as a property owner to really main be maintaining your property and you're living next with someone that has either is not even there or out of the area or just has not reinvested in the property. And I know it's very frustrating and challenging. And from a code enforcement standpoint, we drive around, we we're really complaint-based. We don't have the the staff or the time to kind of circle around the city on a daily basis and and log these. We really rely on neighbors to essentially let us know what the challenges are, and then we'll go out and investigate from there. But I have driven around the city with many staff members. And Petoskey, as we all know, is a beautiful community. There's challenges in every community, wherever you go. And so identifying those, as the mayor said, the carrot or the stick method. We want compliance, and whatever that means, however we get there, that's what we're after. If that means trying to walk alongside someone that's going through a challenging time in their life, maybe. We're surely gonna give them the benefit of the doubt, but as soon as that, as soon as we get drug strung along, if you will, and we don't see many activity, then then the hammer comes out. And the hammer came out on the old hotel recently. And like Director Breed mentioned, he decided that he was gonna cut bait and and sell and and move on. So hopefully, the new owner will invest in the property and get it up to code fairly quickly. He knows what the challenges are because that's all public information. So I will certainly add this as a discussion item. I think it's a it's an important topic. It's certainly, in listening to each of you, you all have made code enforcement a priority in the budget process. So we will, the challenge, like we have right now, is is just hiring. But well, we'll continue to explore whatever options we have and and make sure that we're getting properties up to speed from a code enforcement standpoint.
Mr. Beck. And Mike, your initial point about safety concerns me, concerns all of us. So I think that one stood out. It's almost like there's that, and there's empty storefronts downtown. I see those as two, two separate issues. And Director Breed, I don't remember, it could be, it could have been three months ago, could have been a year and a half ago. But prior to two years ago, your public safety officers weren't looking, specifically looking out for code violations. And then you put attention on it and gave us a great report about the statistics and the incidences. And if it hasn't been a year, we can wait a year, I think, but it was a great report that that showed that even without a full-time or part-time person on that, we're making headway. And and it was just, it was such a compassionate presentation. I was just, I was proud of you and and our city and the way that was presented. So I, again, I don't know where we are, but I think an annual report on that would be a great thing to have. To me, it's also hinders the ability of improving the housing. Because those things that sit vacant are not doing that. There are houses around town that are basically that way, whether you go to Bridge Street. You look at the four or five houses I could name right now. Who have three, three, three sides of their house painted and have left one neighbor's facing not painted. I do know that I used to have a problem with people in their front yards had what I considered a wild front yard, but saw this stuff growing up and, you know, no grass. But I gotta, I had to be patient and say, you know, they paid the property tax there. If that's what they see as beauty to them is wildflowers, et cetera. Butterfly bushes, whom I just say, you need to do what your neighbor's does with your beautiful green grass, so. Well, it took care of Mr. Police Director Breed, Public Safety Director Breed took care of it, so.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor. So I think in in preparation for that meeting, a future meeting where we discuss particularly residential vacancies, I know that I could come prepared to that meeting with a list of all the abandoned and vacant residential structures in Ward Four, and it might be a list of like ten, ten or eleven. But I've I've got my finger on the pulse, because like, like many of you, I walk and I ride my bike in our neighborhood. So I'm pretty aware of what stands vacant, because in a housing crisis, you're looking at every home as a potential home for somebody, and when you see vacancies, it hurts me to like, to see a vacancy. So I know that I could come prepared with that in advance of a meeting, just having that brainstorm list of, here are the vacancies that are in my ward. And and how can we follow up on those or?
Perhaps what we should do is rather than listing what is not right, list what is a policy, as we're supposed to do policies versus telling Mr. Police Chief Breed, Public Safety Director Breed, how, here's a list that we need to have take care of. I think I would rather we talk about generals.
So what I'm suggesting is that for a conversation, you need to have tangibles. So I would, I would come prepared to that meeting in that way. That's my my own, like, preparation for a discussion. It's like, these are concrete tangibles. It's not like highlighting what's wrong, what's wrong, what's wrong, but it's like, you know, these are vacancies. And and if we choose to follow up with a conversation or a directive in terms of the International Property Maintenance Code, then that that would, obviously, that would be something that would be decided amongst council in a conversation.
Very good. Mr. Moore.
Just one addition to the conversation, and this may be because I'm new. But I know that Chief Breed and the public safety officers certainly have the capability to do this enforcement. But my question is, do they have the bandwidth to do it, given all the other things on their plate? So that's another aspect of the dialogue I'd be interested.
That is one reason why we looked at a code enforcer. Public safety, especially in the summertime, spring and fall, need to be taken care of. Safety, that's their main emphasis, is safety. I think a code enforcer, officer, male or female, would be what the city really could utilize.
One of the things we also did in the community I served in, because we were getting consistent complaints on blight and property maintenance code violations. We, we, as a staff, we broke the city up into, we weren't separated into wards like, like we are in Petoskey. But so as a staff, we either drove or walked neighborhoods, and we had a checklist, property maintenance code checklist. And we just made notes as we walked around, and we stayed on the sidewalk. We didn't, we didn't venture off, obviously, into private property. And then we passed that on to, we had a code enforcement officer who was just inundated and needed help. And so we, as a staff, we made it on a Friday. We just walked the city, we drove the city. And we, and that's something we could certainly do here as well, so. It's something that we're to think about.
Okay. Anything else from the public that wants to speak to council? With being done, we'll move on to a point to the city managers' updates. For that, I'll turn it over to City Manager Shane Horn.
Thank you, Mayor. I put together some some thoughts and notes, I guess, that I'll kind of just walk through, if Sarah could help me. So really, what I've been up to the last month is meeting, meeting folks, sitting down with staff, sitting down with each of you to try to get a feel for what's happening in the community. Just things that are important for me to understand and just get some knowledge on. So I've been doing a lot of coffee, breakfast, lunches with folks, what I would consider either elected official staff and what I would call kind of community ambassadors, if you will, that are really engaged in in all things Petoskey. So I've really enjoyed that. The recurring theme that I hear is, everybody just loves this community. They they want the best for this community. The last person I met with, and I'm not gonna tell you who it who it was, but he just, his last point of emphasis to me was, you know, we've spent a lot of time, effort and resources to make this community what it is today. Don't mess this up. I certainly appreciate that. But that's what I've been up to the last month, really just trying to build relationships, and that'll obviously continue. But just quickly, I wanted to run through a few things. We did receive our last deposit of our ARPA funds the end of June, so that brings our total up to almost six hundred and five thousand dollars. I just wanted to let you know that. Yeah, so this is the what does ARPA stand for? Thank you. So these are funds from the federal government that were distributed based on a formula to all communities. So this is, we have two different deposits. One, I don't recall when the first deposit was made. Al, do you recall when that was done?
It's like October of last year.
Okay. So we got, we just received the second one, so six hundred and four thousand dollars in in change, if you will. That can be utilized for our community. Updating on the finance director recruitment, as you all know, this is profile has been posted on Michigan Municipal League and ICMA, and it could be in other locations as well. The responses are due back on Friday, July twenty nine. So we're we're anxiously awaiting what we may see from a recruitment standpoint through through the Michigan Municipal League, and we're excited about that opportunity. I did get notified by our current assessor that he is stepping away. And he didn't say it was because of me, so I I was kind of offended when he first came to my office and told me this. But it has nothing to do with me, but he is just, has a lot of work and just decided he needs to kind of reevaluate his his workload, if you will. So his last day will be August five. Al has reached out to our previous contractual assessor that we've used in the past, Tim Grimm, who has agreed to continue on a contractual method using the same, essentially the same contract that that Bob is working under currently. And then Bob really mentioned that we may want to consider a full-time position again. And obviously, that's a position that the council is responsible for. So I'm I'm certainly willing to hear that discussion from each of you on how you would like us to proceed. But for now, we have, we have Mr. Grimm in place or will be in place to continue on in a contractual manner similar to what we've done in the past. Okay, Sarah, if you want to click the next one. So a few project updates that have been passed on. So this is the State Street resurfacing project. Concrete sidewalk and curb work is complete. Restoration and tree planting will be complete early this week. And then the milling of the existing asphalt will be done today. They're working on that today. They have been working on that today. And they may may still be working on it currently now. I know we did get a few complaints from residents, especially right after the July fourth holiday, that they were working a little later. They were trying to get caught up because of the holiday and because they had concrete coming in or curbing. So certainly apologize for the disruption. We certainly value the peace and quiet that the evening brings. But we really wanted to get these contractors out of here as soon as possible. So we had a couple of long days and certainly apologize for that. They will be paving intersections and parking areas tomorrow. And then the main line, the remaining main line of State Street will be paved on Wednesday and Thursday this week. And all of this, as we all know, is dependent on the weather. There there has been some, depending on which weather source you look at, some some potential rain coming in. So we'll just have to see how that impacts our schedule. But if we can get, you know, two or three dry more days, we can get this pretty well behind us on State Street by the end of this week. So East Lake Street reconstruction project, as we all, this is a complete reconstruct of the road, all of our underground work, undergrounding utilities as well. We are planning on top course paving tomorrow on East Lake at Williams to Summit. This is including Clinton and Summit. We will obviously continue restoration and tree planting kind of as we go. And then sewer and water underground installation over the next two weeks on Summit to Kalamazoo. A few miscellaneous patches, really from repair work that's been done, will happen as well tomorrow. This is on West Lake Street at Ingalls, as I, as I alerted all of you to, we had a We had a significant twelve inch water main break um, last week. Um, I believe it was last Saturday. Um, that really tore up that intersection to the point where we needed to replace the entire intersection. That'll happen tomorrow. That one, we will have uh, folks that'll be flagged, uh, flagging the intersection. We obviously can't close it. We have one way into the, the campground. Um, so we'll be kind of monitoring that. Making sure people can still get through the intersection, doing one side at a time. So we'll be doing that tomorrow. And then there's a patch on State Street, uh, Emmett near State Street, and then a Willis Avenue uh, patch as well. That'll be all done tomorrow. Um, we were alerted to DTE doing some natural gas upgrades. Um, this is uh, in, in about sixteen hundred uh, feet of new gas main will be installed, including about thirty new service lines that will be upgraded. Um, and the, the areas that will be impacted will be Rose Street at Clinton, Baxter, between Fulton and Washington. Washington at Petoskey heading north, and then Woodland Avenue at Grove Street heading north. So they'll be doing these, the, the contractor will be doing the work uh, and then bringing any uh, indoor meters. Um, older indoor meters outdoors and using that smart meter technology during that upgrade as well. Um, other items that I just put on my list. I received many, I think all of your comments from award and city conventions. And just really kudos to, to each of you for the time you spent uh, during this process. My first time going through that pretty unique process, pretty interesting. Um, and engaging. When we talk about engaging the community, that, that was pretty engaging and that's pretty neat to see. Um, it's pretty easy to, to, to take a form and get signatures, but to do something this way, engaging with neighbors is pretty, pretty neat. Pretty special. So congrats. Um, so I will be putting some, some comments back to you on those. I'll be meeting individually with staff, trying to put some thought on some of those questions that I received and then getting that back to you. So I just ask for your patience over the next few weeks as I work through that. Um, I put this on there. I, I've talked to a few of you as I've met individually about potentially um, considering a different start time for our meetings. Uh, as we all know, we start at seven o'clock. Um, is that the most um? You know, when we talk about staff, that's not the most um, uh, efficient way for us as staff to operate. But again, this meeting is not for us as staff, so I certainly want to consider that. But um, if there's any opportunity to consider a earlier start time, that, I'm just kind of throwing that out there for potential discussion at some point. Uh, as we move forward. One of the things we did at a previous um, uh, location I worked at is we had. We kept our seven o'clock, but we had a, a work session ahead of that meeting. And sometimes that was beneficial. And it could have been stuff that was on the agenda, or it could be stuff that we needed to talk about for something in the future. Or just to update you all on um, a topic of interest. So maybe potentially, if, if you don't want to change the start time, maybe we, we incorporate, it wouldn't have to be every meeting, but maybe you incorporate a work session. And that's still a public meeting. You're just not voting, doing anything that you vote in that meeting. It's just informational. So those are things that we can talk about as we move forward as well. And then I wanted to somehow talk about Zoom status. Do you want to continue um, engaging in this platform? Um, is there still value to you to engage in this way? Um, again, I don't, I hate to keep bringing up other communities that I came from, but we did do live streaming of our meetings. Um, you could watch the meeting live. You could watch, it was a um, recorded. Once it was, meeting was done, there was a link there that you could click on and watch the meeting at your leisure. Um, you could start and stop it and um, and that was an option as well. So there's a lot of different options to consider uh, how you want to proceed. And maybe the status quo is fine for now, and that's completely fine as well. But um, I always want to think about, you know, make sure that we evolve with how things are moving. And if this is something that um, we need to think about from a process and procedure standpoint, I certainly want to stay up on those things. A few uh, pictures. I was uh, fortunate to enter, be able to uh, go to um, the Winter Sport, Winter Sports Park. Uh, off uh, fundraiser um, kickoff uh, earlier this week, or last week, I'm sorry. Um, and it was well attended, um, really a neat opportunity to, when you, when you think of, you know. Public-private partnerships, this is really a grassroots effort. It's pretty, pretty special, pretty unique place as we, as you all know. And I'm coming to find out, obviously, um, what we, what we'll be able to do with uh, this structure. Getting it updated, getting the structure over it, getting the, the, the hockey area um, kind of built back up. Uh, and just hearing the passion from the speakers, uh, all the history um, of that location. It, it's a pretty special place for a lot of people. So I'm excited to, to see really that this is not really being driven by the city. It's really being driven by people that love the park and want to see the park um, grow and thrive and flourish. So Kendall has done a great job in, in, in securing grants throughout, you know, on many different projects, as you all know. So we've got some significant uh, grant dollars in. We've got a significant uh, contribution from Rotary. Who's, who's been a great community partner for the city. And now it's, now it's time for us as residents to kind of roll up our sleeves and push this across the finish line. So I'm excited about that. Though you can go to Friends of Winter Sports Park to see uh, how you can contribute. No, you're good. You can go on. So just a few pictures to go along with what we're talking about here. I, I think I, I'm a visual person, so you can see visually what, how things are going. So this is State Street near Lockwood Avenue, looking towards Harvey Street, Woodland Avenue and Walkersu Avenue. So you can see one side. Uh, we've, we've done the, the trench work. Uh, we put the base work in. Obviously, the other side now has the base work in. So now we're in the process of milling off the, the main drive lanes. And then putting the asphalt back. So pretty, pretty significant project.
Did you take those pictures with a drone?
Um, these are from Mike, so I don't know how. Okay. Um, again, State Street looking uh, near Lockwood, looking the other way, looking east toward Kalamazoo Avenue. Again, um, we've done a lot of uh, restoration work, as you can see on uh, inside of the curbing as well. So it's looking really nice. Continue. So this is East Lake Street, uh, near Clinton Street. Um, intersection looking west toward Williams and Division Street. So again, projected, this is a, a, a large undertaking, as we all know, uh, what was involved here with undergrounding utilities. And, and water and sewer improvements. Uh, just a, a pretty massive project uh, for our crews and our contractors. So we're, we're still uh, ahead of schedule. So we're hoping that the weather can cooperate and we're able to make good progress. Again, East Lake Street, uh, near Summit Street Intersection, looking east toward Ottawa Street uh, and Kalamazoo. Uh, so that proc- process and progress is continuing. So that's kind of the, the overall update that I had. If I can entertain any questions uh, on any of these. Or any other, anything additional.
One, one comment I'd like to give is uh. One comment I'd like to give is uh, I, I've been involved with uh, the award conventions, the city conventions for over twenty years. And it was really nice to see you attend. And uh, the people are able to meet you, but also for you to get uh, ideas of uh, comments that people had. Through, through the city convention. So I think that was really admirable of you, when you and your wife Michelle there. I think it was really, it was great.
Yeah, I, I really enjoyed it. It was, it was a good time for me to meet uh, folks. I've tried to take advantage of those. I went down to the, the art fair. Um, uh, Saturday and walked around and, and uh, that was really neat. Um, uh, really, really well done. Well put together and a lot of people milling around and hopefully vendors sold lots of, lots of neat stuff. So we've really enjoyed getting entrenched in the community. Uh, actually had our kayaks out in the bay yesterday uh, for the first time. So we're excited about that. We love to, we love to be on the water and um, loved to get on the wheelway and bike and bought a couple uh, bikes. And excited about uh, becoming part of Petoskey.
Then you're not leaving.
No. One thing I, I'll just close on, I'm, I'm super impressed uh, that I get to work with this, a great staff. These, these folks are outstanding. Um, they're passionate about what they do. They've had, they're passionate about service. Uh, first, and uh, each of them individually are, are obviously very passionate about their respective areas. But as we've talked, I'm, my big thing is customer service. I want to make sure that we're responsive and responsible to our residents. And so if you get calls, if you get emails, let's make sure that we're following up and following through. And, and uh, and so I'm very, very impressed with the group that uh, I have to work with. And um, I'm, I'm just blessed to be here and blessed to be part of this team.
We're blessed to have you. Anyone else just make comments from city managers up there. Mister Wagner.
Um, so a couple of inches. I've, I've heard great things about your meetings out and about town from a lot of people you've been meeting with. So that's, that's just super encouraging. And um, and I think I emailed you and you said you and Sarah talk the language in our convention. Protocol now has to change because our mayor is only elected every two years and we're, we're elected every three years. And all of the convention processes for getting to get her are all based on that one and two-year term. And so I know you're working on that, but thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, Sarah brought that to my attention and um, it was probably administratively something we could have just um, completed. But I really wanted to get it back in front of you and I can redline things and bring it back so you all know what the changes are. I didn't want to do that right ahead of your convention. I thought that might be confusing for some, so I didn't want to make any changes. But we'll get that back in front of you.
Any else counsel?
One more thing about that, that I heard a lot from people is mid-July is a terrible time to have those meetings. And sometime in June would be a, a lot better if, if something could be worked out. So uh, just, just a consideration.
You can have them as early as you'd like. You just can't have them any later than it is.
As long as we don't start seeing yard signs in May for November. That is an issue sometimes. Okay, council, moving on. Next to the appointments, I've asked you for consideration to appoint the following to the Building Authority. From the Board of Commissioners, I asked for the appointment of Shane Horn to fill the vacancy. He expired uh, July first, two thousand twenty-four, which was created by Mr. Sprebel's resignation. Uh, also the appointment. Of Robert Engelbrecht, I don't know. Shall we appoint him?
Well, it's the positions of city assessors, city treasurer and.
The position, as well as Al Terry for uh, the clerk treasurer. Uh, both of these are three-year terms. I'm going to go with these individually so that if somebody has a issue with one or other, then we can discuss it. I need a motion or discussion. Mister Wagner?
I'm motion to approve the appointment of City Manager Shane Horn to fill the vacated position.
As well as.
Yes, as well as the reappointment of Robert Engelbrecht, City Assessor, and Al Terry, so uh, clerk treasurer.
Thank you.
Both for three-year terms.
Do I have a second?
Second to motion.
Sorry, we're second for Mister Shields. Any other discussion? I'd like to go to Clerk Terry for all.
Wagner.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Moore.
Hi.
And Murphy.
Yes. Next is the Election Commission. It's appointment of City Manager Shane Horn to fill a vacant, vacated uh, term. That was created by the resignation of the past city manager.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion from Mister Moore. Do I have a second? Miss Walker, thank you. Uh, in the discussion, I go to City Clerk Terry for all.
DeMore.
Hi.
Walker.
Hi.
Wagner.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
And Murphy.
Yes. Moving right along, couple to go. The Emmett County, Emmett Shilboy, Sheboygan Central Dispatch Authority Board. And that would be appointment of, uh, once again, the City Manager Shane Horn to fill the uh, an al- alternate. Position for Emmett County. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mister Moore, do I have a second?
Second to motion.
Mister Shields, any other discussion? Take it to Mister Terry Favola.
DeMore.
Hi.
Shields.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Walker.
Hi.
And Murphy.
Yes. Now we're moving on to uh, boards uh, that are more in line with city residents. Um, the Greenwood Cemetery Board, an appointment of Franklin and Bertie, who lives at nineteen Walkersu Avenue. To fill a vacancy term that ends in May two thousand twenty-six. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mister Moore, thank you. Do I have a second? Miss Walker, thank you. Any other discussion?
I do have discussion, I have question.
Yes.
Um, so I had made a recommendation or referral to the mayor about somebody else. And for the, for the Greenwood Cemetery Board. And for the future, I think it would be great to have perhaps somebody with a more of an environmental science. Or a, a land-based um, kind of hat that they could wear. So maybe somebody from like Tippin-Mitt Watershed Council or Little Traverse Conservancy. Because of my concerns with what's, what has transpired at the Greenwood Cemetery with that deforestation project. And the expansion of the cemetery. And I know, Mayor, that you and I had spoke about how um, burials have changed. Over, over the last, um, during the pandemic and very much a switch between um.
Underground to.
Um, whole, I'm, I'm trying to think about how to say this, whole body burials versus burying somebody's ashes. Um, and how much land that, that consumes and how the Greenwood Cemetery Board would plan for the future based on those trends or those changes in our. In our world. So if, if it's possible, and as we move into the future and different people um, could be appointed to this board. I would love to see somebody kind of wearing that hat as an environmental perspective.
As you know, uh, I brought to you last time around for the cemetery, I brought to you Amy Tweeden. Uh, city planner at the time, because she had concerns about the drainage and about the process up at the cemetery. That's why I put her on the board. Okay. Uh, Mister Lambert's name came to me through several different individuals, several people on the board. Uh, yeah, so I gladly will take notice of the need for somebody more environmental.
Yeah, and I think Franklin did a wonderful job. I know him personally, and he has a tremendous amount of credibility. And he served on our, on our school board for many decades. So not to say anything bad about Franklin, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just hopeful that maybe for the future, we would consider somebody that could wear that hat.
Right. Okay, sounds good. Uh, usually I give a summary of what their application states. Mister Terry, would you do?
Sure, DeMore.
Hi.
Walker.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes. Next is the last appointment. It's to the Planning Commission. I wish to appoint and ask for your support Doug Bucka, eight twenty-two Grove Street. To fill a, an appointment that would go until August two thousand twenty-three. Mister Buck uh, was on the Downtown Management Board in the past, uh, involved with United Way. Uh, but was, he was a scout master at Troop Seven. Uh, is very active, has, I think, three kids, been raised in the city task, going to public school. Um, I think he'd be a good choice. He's, he's involved with banking. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve Doug Buck, Mister Buck for Plan Commission.
Do I have a second? Miss Walker, thank you.
Thank you. Um, could you tell me what vacancy he's, uh, Doug Buck would be filling?
Yes, uh. Kent Warner, who lives on.
Okay, yeah.
Kalamazoo Street, uh, felt that his work was taking him uh, the inability to have uh, employees. And just to talk, called me and said, I just can't manage it right now. I would like to come back in the future possibly. And I said, we're more than welcome. I think he's, it was a real benefit to the plan.
So he's filling Kent Warner's vacant position. And then, not to back up, but the, the vacated term that's being filled on the. And then, not to back up, but the, the vacated term that's being filled on the Greenwood Cemetery Board, was that Amy Twitten?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will be bringing to you next month, uh, probably four or five more appointments. And in the following meeting, uh, there are three people on the planning commission that are up, uh, August thirty-first. For the appointment as well. I will be putting you names, their names, or uh, if not, somebody else to fill that spot.
We need roll on that one.
Just give me roll.
I will. Shields.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
De Moore.
I.
And Murphy.
Yes. Now, we're moving to new business. Might be out of here earlier than normal. This is the approval of the, the new business approval of the city manager's designation as an acting city manager and the city manager's absence. Or inability to serve. Let me take this.
Yes, okay. Um, so this was uh something. That was brought to my attention that I, I needed to do. Typically, how I functioned in the past is I. Um, rotate that responsibility amongst my leadership team. Um. Obviously, every charter is a little different. The charter is pretty specific here about uh going through this process. So. My recommendation to council is to um designate uh Mike Robbins uh as acting city manager. To serve in my absence or inability to uh, to serve. So I ask for your consideration.
Ms. Walker.
I'd be happy to make a motion, Mayor.
Support.
I have a motion from Ms. Walker and a second from Ms. De Moore. I can't think of a better person.
Me neither.
I think he's well loved by everybody. Uh, any other discussion? Public wish to win on this one. I will go to clerk Terry for all.
Walker.
Yes.
De Moore.
I.
Wagner.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
And Murphy.
Yes. Next is the adoption of proposed resolution, appointing staff to the Michigan Public Power Agency Board of Commissioners. And for that, I will turn it over to Shane Horn as well.
Yeah, so what you're seeing tonight is a lot of uh housekeeping. Um, that's probably the theme for tonight. Uh, so this is just updating. Um, positions um and representatives um on the Michigan Public Power Agency. Um, so we would ask for your consideration for this update.
Ms. Walker.
Um, so do we need a motion?
Yes.
Okay, excuse me, I'm sorry. I'd be happy to make a motion to approve uh both. Uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, public works director, Mike Robbins and city manager Shane Horn as the alternate commissioners for the MPPA board.
Mr. Shields. It's a very important board. Involved working with us to get us to the two thou- two thousand thirty-five hundred percent renewable energy. Uh, MMP, MPPA is very important. I go to roll.
Walker.
Yes.
Shield.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
De Moore.
I.
Murphy.
Yes. Last, adoption of a proposed resolution that would accept the state of Michigan's waterway grant agreement. For removal and replacement of a fuel storage.
We have one other appointment with MPPA, the member authorized representative.
Oh, excuse me.
Some, I think it's below that, next line item there.
Okay. Uh, adoption of a proposed resolution, appointed staff. It's public safety, uh, public, Michigan Public Power Agency, uh, member authorizing representative.
Correct.
Okay.
We'll make a motion to uh adopt and close proposed resolution authorizing the public works director, Michael Robbins, to serve as its. MAR and city manager Shane Horn as its alternative MAR.
Support.
Have a motion for Mr. Shields, second from this De Moore. Any other discussion? I go to city clerk Terry for all.
Shields.
Yes.
De Moore.
I.
Wagner.
Yes.
Walker.
I.
And Murphy.
Yes, I. Uh, last but not least. Adoption of a proposed resolution that would accept the state of Michigan's waterways grant agreement for removal. Replacement of fuel storage tanks after the marine.
Enough job of um maybe patting ourselves on the back at times, but Kendall has done an outstanding job for the city. Obviously, I've only been here a month, but when I've talked to people, um. Parks and Rec comes up quite often and how blessed we are to have the resources that we have. And with Kendall's leadership, I know he's, he's brought in a significant amount of. Grand dollars to the city. So I certainly want to uh thank uh Kendall publicly for his efforts in, in getting that done.
Thank you, appreciate very much. Uh, so what we're asking um tonight is, is basically on. We submitted a grant for the fuel storage program last year for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars based on our problem cost. Will cost you then at three hundred ninety-five, which was an additional hundred and forty-five thousand over. Then we had estimated and for justified reasons, those costs were, were up. So. Um, I submitted another grant after talking with the waterways commission based on our overage. Uh, for another grant, the same project, which is fifty percent of, of what the overage was for seventy-two thousand five hundred. So this is basically the, the project's already been approved by this. Or um, at the end of the day, if we would have known what the uh contractor's amount would have been. I would have just submitted one grant, fifty percent. At the end of the day, we're, we're still at fifty percent of this project. So this is uh, this, this asking for your, your uh approval for.
Ms. Walker.
Yeah, I have a question. Thank you. Thank you, Kendall. Um, do you have an idea of where this money would come from? Would this come from Tiff?
This is, this comes directly from the marina. The marina.
Okay. And you've got enough money in your budget for this year to cover this extra cost. Excellent. Good job.
We have over three million or thereabouts, don't we, in the account or something like that?
No, the reserve for the, for the marina itself is like eight, nine hundred thousand dollars.
That's all.
That's strictly the marina. General funds, like. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. De Moore.
I want to repeat Mr. Mr. Horn's kudos on all your grant efforts. They do not go unrecognized and are very much appreciated. Um, one quick question. I noted, we, I should also say. With apologies for all this compliance that's in this agreement. It's like incredible and I'm an attorney. It's like, wow, there's a lot of compliance. But my question is, um, there's a provision here that says you have to use all the funds within three years. So I was just curious if you had some projection of the. Project timeline.
Our project timeline is going to take place between the close of the marina season and the opening season. So from, I hope mid-October, um, mid-October, we will. When the dis- the gas usage will tear the old one out and put the new one in, ready for operations by the time we open the marina in early May.
Thank you.
So those that work at the city convention, uh, there was all, the city. Obtained grants of almost one point nine million, one point eight million. If you think about that, that would money that would otherwise have to come out of the general fund to do these projects. So kudos to you, Kendall, and to everybody else that is writing grants for the city because. Imagine if we had to find that money in the general fund, we would be not, maybe, I don't know, Pauline Snow or something, really. Because that's a heck of a lot of money. So thank you, Kendall, for your dedication. Mr. Wagner.
Uh, I'd like to motion to approve the state of Michigan waterways grant agreement for removal and replacement of fuel storage tanks at the marina.
I'll second the motion.
Motion from Mr. Wagner and a second from Ms. Walker. Any other discussion? But a city clerk Terry for all.
Wagner.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Shield.
Yes.
De Moore.
I.
Murphy.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin, for all your work. Great job, what dedication. Now, we have put city council comments. It's the opportunity for them to express and have a comment. I will start with word for Miss Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just feeling very elated with the progress and the relationships that were both, both in our ward convention and ward for. And in our city convention. I had people turning up for my ward and I saw, um, otherwise in other wards as well, the same thing. Like people that maybe have never even been to a public meeting before, um, actually signed up. They're like, well, okay, Lindsay Walker. If you really want me to come to this meeting, I, you know, what, how does it work? And people were, were really very responsive and engaged in that. So that, that felt really good to me. And another thing that I had done, um, for our ward convention was I brought out a list of documents. So I had my very nice bound eleven by seventeen capital improvement plan for parks in Iraq there. And I had one of my residents borrow it from me for some evening reading, because they had lots of questions, of course, about our parks. So Washington Park came up and, you know, there's a plan for every park in that capital improvement plan. And whether or not we use it as a beacon or just something that can kind of guide us into the future, I thought it was really. I was elated to know that people were just very interested and they really wanted to know. And I, I brought, you know, I brought our, our, um. The legal documents from our charter. I had that binder with me. I had our annual budget for twenty twenty-two. I had our capital improvement plan for. Twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-six. And people had specific questions about certain roads and when is, when is Rush Street going to be repaid? And utilities undergrounded? And when is Petoskey Street? So having those documents available and accessible to, to my residents, that, that just felt really good. And people, people want to know. And if you give them the opportunity to review and, and comb through the information, they definitely will take you up on that offer. So. All, all good feelings all around with our wars and city convention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very positive. Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, compliments again to city staff on our Fourth of July and to our employer community. Our sunrise rotary, um, took the lead for the second year in a row. And we had donations from businesses, from individuals. We funded uh the fireworks. Unfortunately, got, had a little issue with some rain at the end of the show. But uh, we had, we had um the coordination. We ended up with over seventy parade entries, which I think is double what we had a year ago. I walked up the parade route and back with the steel drum band and said, hello, Bettina and others. Our streets were lined with two or three people deep the entire route. It was incredible. I ended up with the steel drum band at Pennsylvania Park and the compliments on that, the show that was there were incredible. And then our uh, goes, folks from our recovery community and four different acts and Bayfront Park and just a number of other things. It was. And it, and even the, the late decision by the fireworks company and um. Our sunrise robbery and they called Harbor Springs, even though there was a competition for them to go first. Everybody made a decision, but we gotta, we gotta set, set these things off. And there were some disappointed people, and it was about an hour early. But it was a great show and it would have lost a lot of people who were going to go home without doing that. So. Um, the teamwork with Parks and Rec and with public safety and, and everybody else involved, it was, it was fantastic. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Kyle, uh, Kyle Smith, uh, Ryan Wagner and Andy Hayes, who were the co-chairs uh for the fireworks. And the Fourth of July activities.
Thank you.
Thank you to you three. Word two, we look, by the way, at the most people at the city convention.
You have a traveling trophy.
We're gonna have a trophy. I will give a trophy, I have to have a traveling trophies. I have to keep it at your house and bring it to the next board. Uh, they, we had a perfect fifteen there. Uh, Lindsay had fourteen.
Fourteen.
Uh, I love it. Yeah, kudos to all two. Yes, very, uh, uh, second. Councilman Walker's sentiments on the encouragement that I, I get from seeing our, our community activism and engagement. And, and really the, you know, mentioned partnerships at the, the Winter Sports Park, that grassroots initiative is, is powerful. And um, you know, working from the bottom up is where some change is going to happen. And I, I hope the city can continue to uh. Allow for that and look for ways that we can support and, 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 you know, at least get out of the way sometimes uh for uh blocking. That bottom up change that's sometimes needed. Uh, uh, we are fortunate in the city to have Tippecement Watershed Council. Uh, their headquarters located in city Petoskey. Right now, they have a green stormwater initiative going on. We have a survey uh online and they're encouraging residents uh in the city to throw out that survey. So I also want to encourage our residents to go out there and fill out that survey, look through the website and see what they mean by green stormwater initiatives. I think uh we all have that shared value of protecting this bay and they have some great solutions.
Thank you. Ms. De Moore.
Well, I'll begin with an admission against interest, and that is that the first ward had the lowest number of attendees. However, the competition is on for next year. Let the record reflect. Um, I, you know, ward conventions, I agree, they were terrific. I just always feel honored and privileged, not only to have people tell me that things are good. But that they come with constructive comments about how things can be better. Because I think there, there is so much for us to mine. Uh, because no matter how good a place is, we can always look to how can it be better? And so we received a lot of um positive comments, but constructive comments as well. And I thank you, Shane, for feel, feeling a lot of, I think. Comments that are incoming from everybody looking for responses for constituents. Second of all, I'll also echo your comments on art in the park. When I was wandering around, ran, ran into Audrey, many other folks down there. But what I thought was really interesting was a number of spots that I've stopped. Uh, I heard the merchants say. There is no place like this. The day started with fudge and the afternoon was cherries and water. And so a lot of positive feedback about the experience that they were having in the park that day. Thank you.
Looking forward for that. Many years to come. Um, two things. Um, I was asked to be on the uh Tippecement Watershed Council Board and I've joined that board. Uh, I feel honored to be asked that. Uh, I grew up on Bear River. Uh, we played in it, we swam in it, we can do it, we rafted in it. So uh, I'm very honored to help protect. Our bay from water. Secondly, uh, I've asked, working with Shane. We are set up a uh public arts commission. We had one meeting, I've met with, and they've been, Joe, who, we're pulling together uh a template to get going with this. Uh, in the future, we'll be selecting, uh, we're, we're going to move forward. This is not just a downtown arts commission. This is a citywide arts commission, I think, and we have Crooked Tree will be involved. Uh, Kendall, of course, Shane, uh, we have a, a great group of people that are, 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 have met. Uh, and we will keep you posted on that. In the future, there will be a identification of uh select committee, art committee. Which would be responsible for helping us to pare down and decide what artists going where and how, whether it's temporary, permanent. But we have those things to work out yet. And I see most of the cities I move, I visit here, I love going to cities in Michigan. All of them are starting to have a good public art. And I look at ours and I go, huh, we have a great mural here or there. We've got great stuff at the college, but we need it in our community park, our public neighborhood parks downtown especially. So there's a great, I'm really excited about that and I'm so glad that I'm going to be back for two more years to make sure that happens, so. Uh. This city wouldn't be where it is without those great s- citizens, but also with the staff that we have, the leadership. The public safety director, Kendall, we are so fortunate to have good staff people. And so all, all I can say is thank you to you guys for. Helping us make Petoskey the best city in, in, in Michigan to live in and the most desirable. Because if you ask people, they'll say, oh, I love going to Petoskey, I wish I could live there. So I tell them, come and visit, but go home. Bring your money. Whether it could be enough for the business before this council, I call this meeting adjourned.